Good evening. It is 5:30. We could call the regular board meeting for February 14th, 2020, 2022 to gather, to order. Please join me in standing to pledge the flag. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mrs. Gellis.
Here.
Dr. Messer.
Present.
Mrs. Wackels.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
I would take a motion to adopt the agenda as it's presented, including any dandums that you may have received today.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye. Good news reports this evening, we have two of them. Nord, you're up first.
Yes.
Jill?
Hello, good evening, everybody. So we come today to share two things with you. The first thing that we wanted to share is that we have school newspaper, first edition print, and I'm just going to pass one out to the board, pass a copy to everybody, and then tell you kind of how it came to be. So basically, we recognize that we had a lot of different gaps in different things that had gone on. Our students had different needs based on, you know, COVID and being out of school and our new math program and a bunch of different kinds of things like that. So we created a period of our day called, we call it RPI right now, and it's just a period where our students have been assessed in different areas and then get the opportunity to go to a different class with like-minded students and get some kind of a service in an area that they could use some help with. And one of our groups of students was practicing writing and the teacher that teaches that class decided to let them start writing his paper. And so this is our first edition of their paper. They've been working on it for about five weeks, putting it together, talking about the different things, all picked things. There's some really great dad jokes in here. There's some interviewing a staff member, there are new student spotlight, information about orchestra and band, and then a little bit about the town of Amherst. So as you get a chance to go ahead and look that over, we wanted to present that to you. And then the second thing that we have are some of our students from Mrs. Beetler's classroom have come to share their Black History Month projects. And so the way that Mrs. Beetler went about this was she let every student pick a, pick a famous black American, and then she had them choose, from a choice board, go through and pick one of six different ways to represent the information that they've learned. So we have, I think, five students that wanted to share different parts of their project that all came this evening to do so. So I'm going to have Odin, I think, right?
Odin.
You want to come up first?
Yeah.
So tell them who your famous person is.
Mine's Barack Obama.
Want to tell us about your person?
So, so we, so, yeah.
Okay, no, we're off.
So his family, he has, his spouse, a wife, is Michelle Obama. His kids, he had two kids, Malia Ann and Hashemalian. His parents are Stanley and Dunham and Barack Obama. Sure. His, some of his accomplishments was he was the first African-American and Hawaiian president. He won a Nobel Peace Prize in 2009. He, he had the Passion Protection and Affordable Care Act, or Obamacare. He ended the war in Iraq, and he eliminated Osama bin Laden, or head of 9/11. Some interesting facts about him, he had eight siblings, he was the 44th U.S. president, he was an American politician, lawyer, a member, a member of the Democratic Party, and the first African-American and Hawaiian U.S. president. He's 60 years old as of today, and Barack, his first name, actually means lightning and blessing. Some, one famous quote he said is, "It's now our generation's task to carry on for what those pioneers began. For a journey is not to complete until our wives or mothers and daughters can earn a living equal to theirs. A journey is not complete until happy brothers and sisters are treated like anyone else under the law." So, so if we are truly created equal, and surely we commit, that the love we commit to one another must be as well. Barack Obama. So a timeline for his life, he was in 1961, he was born on August 4th in Honolulu, Hawaii. And then when Barack was a kid, his mom and dad got divorced, and his dad went back to Kenya, and Barack's mom got remarried to a man who was born in New York. In 1983, Barack graduated from Columbia University. He decided that he wanted to be a lawyer and entered high school. In 1996, Barack entered politics. In 2004, he became a state senator of Illinois. In 2008, Barack won for president against John McCain, and won. At that time, he was the first African-American president.
Joan, what's her name? Her name is Olivia. Olivia. All right. So Olivia has Bessie Coleman, and this is her slideshow presentation?
Bessie was born in Amherst, Texas on January 26th, 1892, and died on April 30th, 1927. She was an aircraft pilot and human rights activist. Family, adulthood, and childhood. Bessie had nine other siblings. Their names were Lila Coleman, Ben Walter Sams, oh, it doesn't show Coleman.
That's okay.
Lila Coleman, Ben Coleman, Walter Sams Coleman, Alberta Coleman, Kayla, Ota Coleman, John Coleman, Elise Coleman, Nulis Coleman, and Georgia Coleman. Her parents were Susan and George Coleman. Bessie married Claude Glenn. He was 14 years her, older than her. Bessie and Claude did not have each other. Obstacle she faced. In 1921, a time when there was both genders and racial discrimination, Coleman broke barriers and became the first African-American woman to earn her pilot's license. And even though flying schools in the United States denied her entry, she took it upon herself to learn French and move to France to achieve her goal. Important life events, major accomplishments, and awards. Important life events, some important life events are Bessie became a manicurist, where she met many rich African-Americans. Bessie left her mom to go to school. Awards. Bessie earned an aviation pilot's license. Major accomplishments. Bessie was the first African and Native American and woman to earn her an aviation pilot's license. She did a lot of things African-Americans could not do. Important facts. When defeating gender and racial prejudice, the then 29-year-old became a symbol for millions of women, women of color. She was well-known for her stunt flying and aeropilots. Bessie was a pioneer in aviation, helping break barriers for African-American and women of color. Timeline. On January 26th, 1892, Bessie was born. In 1905, Bessie attended Oklahoma College of Agrofarthing and Normal University. In 1915, Bessie moved to Chicago, to Chicago and worked as a manicurist. Bessie moved to France in 1920, where she was finally able to achieve her goal. In 1921, Bessie earned her an aviation pilot's license. In 1923, an exhibit showed is scheduled. 10,000 people gathered to see Bessie fly. In 1926, Bessie purchased a new plane. She was flying the plane, the new plane, when it did a tailspin at 1,000 feet and sadly died. Inspirational quotes. "I refuse to take no for an answer." Another one is, "If I can create the minimum of my plans and desires, there shall be no regret." Another one is, "I decide blacks should not have faced, have to, have, I decide blacks should not have to experience the difficulties I had to face."
This is Crosby Marty, and he had the shoebox project?
My project is on Jay-Z, and it's the, and the first item is a dictionary. As a child, Shawn Carter has read through dictionaries to find writing words, which was what led him to be a rapping wizard. Jay-Z credits his sixth-grade teacher for making him one of the love words. The next item is a ring. Jay-Z shot his brother at the age of 12, accusing him of stealing his ring, but his brother sang for it, didn't die. Shawn Carter was scared to death. He was really young. His brother didn't press charges because he realized he was wrong for stealing his ring. Next is a diploma. Despite being really intelligent, Shawn Carter has never graduated from high school. Going up in Brooklyn, New York, and the Marcy Projects, many young kids saw crime, drug abuse, and violence, which made it hard to concentrate on school. The next item is a, Beyonce. Is it, oh, yeah. The next item is a microphone. Shawn Carter has became famous for his ultimate rapping career, which spread worldwide. 2006, MTV named him the greatest rapper of all time. The fifth item is a fiance book. Shawn Carter married the well-known singer Beyonce. Jay-Z married her in 2008. They rented out one of the most famous museums, the Louvre, and danced in front of Mona Lisa in one of their music museums. The next one is a trophy. Jay-Z has won 23 Grammy Awards in his 40 years of rapping. He's in the seventh place for earning the most Grammy Awards. The next one is Monopoly money. Jay-Z is a billionaire. He borrowed all the money from his multiple jobs. In addition to be the rapper, he's a rapper and producer, owns a clothing company, and much, much more. He has a net worth of $1.4 billion. Next one is a dog toy. Back then, some police officers pulled over black people accusing them of owning illegal drugs. They used their police dogs to smell for them. Jay-Z's song "99 Problems" is based on a police dog not finding drugs in his car after being pulled over. Last one is an Annie. One of Shawn's songs, "Hard Knock Life," originates from the well-known musical Annie. He thought the song represented that it was a hard knock life for African-Americans. He lied to the director that he was there at the act, that he was there at the original show, that he did a report in school about it in that first place. And that is my report. I'm Jay-Z.
And then we have Michael. Come on up. So Michael, there was an option on the, on the choice board to do anything else that you could come up with, right? And Michael came up with a comic.
This is my book comic, Rosa Parks, by me, Michael Hood. So they were driving the bus once. Why was she, why is she in the front? Is she seat supposed to be in the back? Excuse me, ma'am. It's supposed to be in the back. If you don't get in the back, I might kick you out. She rudely says no. That's it, get out. How rude. Three days later, ma'am, turn your seat, the white's full, but this is the black area. First of all, you're in the white area. Get that, ma'am. Your seat wants to call the police. But that's not fair. We'll be, we, we should be treated the same. I go, what's your weight? See? Jail. Couple days later, ma'am, wait.
Who is this?
Um, this is Lars Martin, Dr. Martin Lee Musa King Jr.
Good.
I know how you felt, feel. I saw you, God rest you, ma'am. I've been waiting for you a couple hours to tell you this. Maybe we can work together to make things equal. How would you like that, ma'am?
Okay.
Couple days later, the buses were illegal until everything was equal. Eventually, things became equal. Rosa Parks and Martin Luther King Junior were big parts of the civil rights movement. They worked, they, very hard to make things better. The end.
Amelia? Come up. So the, another option was to do an interview. So her and another student, she took the role of the interviewer. You were the interviewer?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other person was Beyonce. So you're going to go ahead. You just want to share up, you want us to stand here while they watch your video?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is Liberty News. I'm your host Amelia, and we have, today we have a special guest. Meet Beyonce.
Hi Amelia, I'm so very proud of you, I'm so proud.
Well, today I have some good questions to ask you.
Today is the day I asked me.
So can we know a little bit about your early childhood?
Sure. Well, to start off, I was born on September 4th, 1981, in Houston, Texas. I had gained skin and mouth and now my mouth. As a young child, I was shy and had very few friends. When I was about nine, seven years old, my mom signed me up to dance class with more friends. When I was up there and started singing, I broke out of my shadow and found my shoes.
Wow, that's amazing. Well, can you tell me anything that happened when you were growing up?
Well, when I was nine, I formed a singing and rap in-girl group, Destiny's Child. But in 1992, my group lost on the Star Search Television talent show, and three years later, we dropped from a recording contract before their album was released.
When you were that young, wow, you must have felt bad.
Yeah, that's pretty sad. But later down the years, I formed a group again, and I grew really popular.
Well, that's great. So did you do anything as an adult?
Um, oh, I decided when I graduated high, from high school to not go to college, because Destiny's Child was growing so popular, it wouldn't have time.
Anything else?
Uh, well, my boyfriend Jay-Z proposed and married me on April 4th, 2008, and we lived a very happy life.
Oh, that's so sweet. So I have a big question. What did you do for this?
The new Destiny's Child group was re-released, now with a lead singer. I grew really, really popular, and I stood one million words.
Wow, that was so much fame so very quickly. Um, so what was I going to say? Oh, I remembered. Say, do you have any fun facts or an inspirational quote?
Well, I'll tell you two facts, and that's the end. I'll tell you a quote I have.
Deal.
Well, to this day, I love the Beatles. And I was little, and when I was little, I won a singing contest by singing John Lennon's "Imagine."
Wow, I love the Beatles too.
Another fact I have is that I'm part Irish and a part French from my mom's side.
That's very interesting.
The last fact I have for you that idolizes another model, Kate Moss.
I didn't even know that.
And the inspirational quote that I have is, "Don't try to lessen yourself to the world, let the world catch up to you."
Well, that probably motivated everybody watching us today. Well, that's all I have for you today. Have a nice day and have a nice, wonderful week.
Beyonce is sick today. Beyonce wanted to be here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I did bring some students, but I'll be honest, I made a mistake before you said you should have went first, because those kids are, no offense, a little cuter than our kids. But you did a great job, guys. So I just wanted to share three things. The first one I wanted to do, this time of year, it's always a good idea to start looking into next year already. So halfway through this year, we start planning for the 2022, 2023 school year. We have 11 new courses. And if you look up there, a lot of them, some of them are renamed, but a lot of them are because of, and I think I will do a good news report just on the Makerspace, so thank you already for allowing that resource to come our way. That's a game changer. There's going to be a lot of great things. But with technology, we have an Intro to Computer Science, Video Game Development, Creative Digital Design, Intro to Code and Robotics, and of course, Makerspace 1. Also, our, you know, we have a partnership with JVS, so our old project, Lead the Way, is now going to be Intro to Engineering. And having conversations with JVS and our teacher, they, we just felt like that is now a new push to move more into the engineering field, so we're real happy about that. With Fine Arts, we have some Potter Wheels coming, another grant that we received, and we are now going to offer Intro to Ceramics. That will be the first, and then Ceramics 2 and Sculpture. And we've already started doing scheduling and course registrations and requests, and I can tell you, I want to make sure I have the number right, Intro to Ceramics already has 187 students wanting to be in there. So that will be a chore and a challenge to get with Mr. DeFranco and Mr. Tronzo to see how we're going to make that work. But that's, that's an example of the student speaking and wanting that creativity. Our World Languages, we part with the Ohio, we partner with the Ohio School of the Deaf, and we started an ASL 1 program, so we will continue that now as a world language, and we will offer not only ASL 1, but next year, ASL 2. And English Language Arts, we have two electives, books and the movies, and science fiction literature. So that will, again, we'll see how the course registrations work. We let the kids kind of pick, you know, students what they want, and we kind of build our schedule around there. So a lot of good things happening for our next school year. Secondly, I'd like to talk, and I'll bring up Leah Morrison and Lucy Fennick. They're both here. They are going to speak about Ego League. And a lot of people ask, what is Ego League? And it's been around for several years. Basically, what I say is, Ego League is anything good for the environment. Their advisor is with us here, Angie DeLeone, and they're doing some partnerships with Main Street. I know they're doing some recycling and with Second Harvest. So there's all kinds of good things. I'm going to step aside and let these two young ladies explain Ego League a little more detail.
So we are both juniors, and we started Ego League, we revamped Ego League this year. We are currently focusing on the fast fashion industry, recycling, the suppression of indigenous peoples, specifically the Lakota tribe. We also are focusing on greenwashing, overfishing, pollution, and currently food insecurity. And Lucy will tell you a little bit more about our February food drive.
We're doing a food drive this month, and we have a donation bid in almost every downtown Amherst storefront, and five or six classrooms here at Steel, where anyone can donate non-perishable foods. And at the end of the month, we'll be donating it all to Second Harvest Food Bank. Thank you.
And last but not least, I would like to bring up Bella Della Pola. For those of you, you know, sometimes in the news you hear, sometimes we hear, what's wrong with this generation? And all these youngsters, what are they doing wrong? And I mean, you look on social media, there's all kinds of things. Standing beside me is an example of what is right with this generation. Many of you don't remember that January 27th was an extremely cold day, and on her way home, she saw a neighbor right at the street in distress, and she stopped, and she's with Kim Haney. She's a part of her med tech, and I'm going to let, I couldn't get Connie Cook came, and that's who basically called Bella an angel out of heaven. Those are her words. I spoke with her earlier, and actually, she's an alumni, and she's also a, I think she retired back in, her grandson's back there.
A long time.
A long time ago. But she was a teacher aide and a monitor at SHUP and at Powers. So pretty awesome that it's kind of come full circle. And I'm going to let, so she couldn't make it, but she made sure her grandson Jared, you know, call him up, he would just like to kind of talk about what that meant to, obviously, his grandma and what it meant to his family.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jared Cook. I'm an Amherst fireman, so obviously, this is kind of very important to me. My grandmother called me this afternoon and told me that Mr. Teller had called her, and unfortunately, she couldn't be here, but asked if I would come. So I've obviously been wanting to meet you, so I said absolutely I would come. And like Principal Teller said, especially someone wanting to be in the healthcare, I've worked for the Cleveland Clinic for 11 years, it's who we need in healthcare. I couldn't be prouder for the city and for this high school having been graduated, I graduated in 2010. So there's a tradition in the fire service that you share patches with other firemen, firewomen. Obviously, you're not a firewoman, but I'd like to consider you one, so I have a patch for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I feel proud of her. But I'm going to tell you, I expect nothing less from my students. I don't. I've got a couple I see faces in, Alexa's like, yeah. Part of the program is, it's first aid and safety, and we learn the three basics, check, call, care from the Red Cross. And you check the scene, scene is safe. I know you checked the scene to make sure it was safe. We don't throw them into danger's way here, but she did exactly what she was supposed to do, and I'm very proud of her, and I expected nothing less. All right, thank you very much.
So again, just another example of things that are getting taught in our classrooms, and, you know, we, we learn so much, and you have situations, but then when you apply them in real life, I mean, that's just, yeah, the nursing field and the medical field is giving great hands with Bella. So that concludes my report.
Now, would you like to say anything?
Uh, no.
But her, the news, the article, I think the Fox News did it, played in California. So she has, it's been, she's getting, she's getting around. So I'm hoping that's the message that it's sending, is help people. Because several people went by, Mrs., you know, the lady, and didn't stop, and you were tuned in, and she did stop, so.
Well, we congratulate you for your expertise and everything that you've learned here in high school.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll have a great career, because look at your resume already.
I want to note, City Council is going to honor her next month also, the City Council meeting. So she's, she's not done yet.
She won't be done all year.
Would you mind, I do have gifts on behalf of the board for all the students that came for spending your Valentine's Day with us. It's just like, very small, but, so, for students. Sorry, camera.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I do hope for the big kids.
Great job, great job.
If you came to do that part of, like, for example, you're welcome to, like, you don't have to leave, but if you wanted to, you're able to do so.
I love Snickers.
Oh, I'm staying.
Hey, the next item on the agenda would be item number six, Hearing of the Public. We didn't have one person sign up to address this this evening. Stan, would you, Stan, state your name and address?
Sure.
Sure. Hi, my name's Dan Sterrett. I live at 5014 Williamsburg Drive in Lorraine. My reason to address the board today is to voice some concerns of my own and some others regarding bullying issues within the district. I've heard from other parents just some concerns that maybe there isn't some of the transparency as to these things, and some concerns with how some of the incidents are handled, and I know that there are students who have told their parents, I don't want this to be reported because I'm afraid of retaliation, and I know that everybody in this, on this board, in this room, wouldn't want students to be afraid to go to school, be afraid of some of this happening. So I, I just want to raise it as something and ask that the board consider looking into things like that, whether the issues are educational with students about the process and how it will work, and how it, there won't be retaliation, and just making sure they feel safe knowing that the, they have the support of teachers and administration reaching out, but just some students don't, and some parents don't feel like things are necessarily always addressed in such a way that they feel that their student's going to be safe going forward. But then my, my biggest concern, as I was thinking about it, as I looked at the report that's required by law for every school district to report the number of bullying incidents in the district that year. And so I pulled up the report for 2020 to 2021, last school year, Powers reported four incidents, Nord two, Junior High one, and Steel reported zero, which I was a high schooler once, and so I was a little skeptical about a zero at the high school to begin with. But then I thought back to October 23rd, 2020, when the school called me to tell me my kid had been bullied at school, but I didn't show up on the report. That makes me feel like maybe my, what happened to my kid wasn't that important to them. It's not a bullying incident, your kid was made fun of on school property, we had to call you to report it, but we didn't put it on our list. So how many other kids fell through the cracks? How many kids look at this and say, I was bullied and I told someone, but it shows a zero on there? My concern must not have been important. So I, I don't feel like that report is accurate, and I then have concerns about how many other things are falling through the cracks. And for it to show zero when I was called and told that my kid was involved in an incident, was a victim of something at school, and then to have it show a zero, to me, that's not sufficient as a parent. Those numbers are supposed to be out there so we know what's going on in our school district. And so I, I just want the board to look into this and find out why my kid's incident didn't make the report, and also to put out a report that's accurate, whether it's only my kid's incident or other things that have fallen through the cracks. I don't know. I can't speak to any of that, but I do know that that number's just not correct for last year. So I, I'd ask the board to look into this, consider whether a committee, a subcommittee to, to look into this, review how things are handled, and whether the incidents are being reported and responded to correctly. I think that would be something that would go a long way in making parents and possibly students feel better about what's being done while our kids are at school, because to, to have the school district tell me there wasn't an incident last year just raises a lot of red flags for me. As a, you know, as an attorney, when I look at the law, I say, if you're supposed to report something and you're not, that's an immediate red flag to me. If my client came to me and said, you know, I was supposed to do this, but I didn't, that's one of the first things, I'm like, well, we're gonna correct what we did wrong. So I want that, I want to see that looked into, corrected, and then consider whether there needs to be some change to the way things are done so that it doesn't happen again, and these things aren't falling through the cracks. So that's all, so we're gonna bring that up.
Thank you. We will certainly review that, and if we err on that, we will make a correction for that as well.
Thank you.
And we appreciate, appreciate you bringing that to our attention, okay? And we will certainly let you know where that status stands as we move forward.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up to address the board this evening, so we can move on to the rest of the agenda at this time, which would be item seven, the Treasurers Report.
Good evening, board, happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Same with the audience. This evening, I'm just going to go over the very brief report, the forecast report that you see in front of you. It's organized and sub totaled by five-year forecast line. Just a, a quick point out to the column that says fiscal '22 months to date, January 22. So it's your third column in the report. You'll see $2,509,114 in the one, line 1035. I just want to point out, look at the asterisks, take the note down to the bottom, that explains the variance. I'll just very briefly explain that January was the first two payments of the Fair School Funding Plan. So there was a, an equalization payment, which was a much larger payment in January than what we had the prior January. Currently in the process of doing a reconciliation of the old funding formula and the new Fair School Funding Formula, and I'll have that reconciliation for you probably next month at this next meeting. We are running ahead in all lines of the forecast, the revenue forecast, but we are just now receiving new tax advances. So we'll receive another tax advance tomorrow, we received one almost two weeks ago, and the settlement will be at the beginning of March, so we'll have a better idea of if taxes are, tax revenues are really running ahead of, of forecast. And then year-to-date, we are running 8,884 deficit. It's pretty good. Again, those are attributed to being able to supplant general fund expenditures into the SER grant revenue streams. So we'll just keep an eye on this. We are building some modest cash balance right now, and I will report again next month on the same. Does anybody have any questions? Shall I move on to my recommendations?
You shall.
Item 8A, I ask the board to approve the board meeting minutes from the regular January 24th, 2022 board meeting. Item two, or B, rather, for the board to approve all of the financial exhibits that you see. 8A, B, C, and D. 8A is the bank reconciliation and fund balances. 8B is the financial summary report that shows by fund and special cost center, all of the financial activity in every fund and special cost center, year-to-date and month-to-date. Item 8C are the forecast line item reports from our municipal financial system that show budget to actual, and 8D is the checklist from January of all electronic checks and accounts payable checks. Item 8C then is a revision to appropriations, only one fund, and that's just a correction from last month. And then item 8D is a then and now for an item that we had an invoice for before the purchase order was prepared. And then 8E are donations. These are all standard that you see each month. Are there any questions?
Can we take a motion before we have questions, please? I entertain a motion for 8A, Group E.
Second.
Motion in question, motion in a second. Is there any questions for the treasurer or any comments for the treasurer?
I'll say, and then I did have her hand, but she's already answered them, so I appreciate that.
And as everyone knows, the board gets the agenda in advance by a couple of days, so that if there are specific questions about specific items, they do have the opportunity to reach out to the treasurer, superintendent, or the staff member that would be appropriate to answer that question so that the answers are there, so that we don't have to pull up all that number and look for it tonight, just so everyone's aware of that. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, please call to roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Item nine on the agenda this evening would be Superintendent's Report, Mr. Teller.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Engel. Just a couple of reminders here. This is Parent Conference Week, and we have, I think all four of our buildings have parent conferences taking place. I want to say Nord is on Wednesday, I believe, and then the other three buildings.
She's shaking her head, yes, yes.
Is she shaking her, yes, okay. And the other three buildings are on Thursday, so that's always a, a good, good thing. And then I, in addition, I think we have two meetings taking place here at the high school on Thursday evening, one for a college credit plus program, kind of a parent information meeting as I understand it. And then I think we have a freshman, an incoming freshman scheduling program for those students that will be freshmen next year. So as Mr. Teller said, it's, it's amazing, this time of year, we're already, you know, full-scale planning mode for, for the next school year, and so we have all those things happening this week. I didn't know, Mr. Teller, you doing all good?
Nope, nope, yep, that's all good.
Perfect. So we've got a lot of things happening this week, and then of course, with our parent conferences, we have Friday through Monday, President's Day holiday, so we do have a four-day weekend here coming up this upcoming weekend. I did want to mention just a couple of other things. The Makerspace, Mr. Teller referenced that. We hope to have a rendering that you would be able to see in detail what this space will look like for our March meeting. I know we've been working, Mr. Teller and Mr. Cocknell, Mr. Mulnar, our, our team has been working on that, they're making some adjustments and changes, and I think we're, we're pretty close to getting those drawings finalized, so we thought that'd be kind of a neat thing if we have that to share for the March board meeting there, so certainly keep you posted on that, that's an exciting project. And the last thing, I know we've talked about this many times at board meetings in the past, but I just, I have to say again, the, the work that our tech team and what Doug Cocknell has done with this Comments Live program is just amazing. I mean, we hear about it on a regular basis, how many parents, how many community members, grandparents are able to access and see our various events that are taking place, and it seems, it just seems like they are in every event. I know there's occasionally an event they're not able to be at, but it just seems like every basketball game, I know the Hall of Fame, they were at the Athletic Hall of Fame, various concerts, all the things that take place, just doing a wonderful job, and obviously providing that access to our community, but also the educational opportunities and experiences that it's bringing to our students. And I, I can't remember how many students we have involved in the program, but it's a lot, and they just do a wonderful job, they have their shirts on, the, I think it says Event Staff on the back, just like you would see at Rocket Mortgage Field House or, or something like that, and the Comments Live, and the logo, and, and the whole thing. It's just a wonderful, wonderful job, and it's just one of those programs we're hearing about on a regular basis, and, and what a neat thing, so I just wanted to, you know, Doug and his team and the kids obviously involved, just a wonderful, wonderful job. So wanted to mention that again, and that completes my report at this time.
I just wanted to comment, I talked to a student that did not get into the program in the beginning because they were afraid, and ended up getting into the program in the second half, and just loves it, and has done a little bit of everything, and just really has, you know, really helped them grow.
Absolutely, just, yeah, so, so many great things have, have come out of that program, and it's just, it's nice when it works out the way it has. We've been able to use some of our SER funds to help support the program, and just it's worked out very, very well. So thank you again for your support of that project.
Any other questions from Mr. Teller?
Now, we'll move on to the Mr. Mulnar report.
Wow.
Well, before we get to my report, as a side note, I was talking to a parent who's a junior high student, was a Comments Live, and was one of the people who, students who was maddeningly illiterate at Amherst basketball game, and she called her mom and said, you know, I am not a basketball fan, but you've got to check this out. This game was exciting. So, yeah, so as we've seen tonight, there's so many wonderful, amazing things happening in Amherst, but, and one of the things that we also have to do, we have to educate kids, right? That's why we're here. So I wanted to, it's mid-year, I wanted to kind of give a little bit of an update on where we're at as far as educating students. So if you're a parent of a student in K through eight, especially the last couple of years, you have probably seen the math reports come home. We, we give an assessment in reading and math from grades K through eight every year just to see where our students are academically and how they're performing. And, and again, the purpose is to monitor their student achievement, identify areas of strength or needing improvement, and also the goal is when we look at the data, actually do something about it, right? So the goal is to see if we can find some information we can change while we're doing in the classroom to have even greater achievement. So I wanted to share with you, just so you can kind of see what the teachers see, we just completed our mid-year assessments, and so one of the things we can do, since we give a, a beginning of the year assessment, is we can look at the growth of the students midway through the year, but also do it at the end of the year. So I wanted to share, this is one of the reports that we, we get with student growth, and this is a class, the entire class is plotted on this, on this grid. And so when you, when you look at something like this, what we have here is we have students and their achievements, so low-achieving students all the way through to high-achieving students, you read that from left to right, and then how much growth they've had, you can read from the bottom to the top. So for example, here are some low-achieving students in this classroom that aren't, aren't having quite as much growth as we'd expect or would like, whereas the upper quadrant, those low-achieving students, for example, the student right here in the 42nd percentile is in the 90th percentile in growth over the first half of the year, right? So great growth for those students. Over here, you have high-achieving students, some that did not have as much growth as we would like, and then high-achieving students who've had amazing growth. And so this is one report where we can look at how students are performing, so I wanted to share with you. Now, a report like this, when you look at it, you can tell right away, there's really no pattern. We don't see anything really that stands out. You have some high-achieving, low-achieving students that have high growth, low growth, it's kind of all over the board, so that's kind of a report where we have a conversation with the teacher, or the teacher would have the principal, just to kind of ask about where these students are, what might be happening in the classroom. Another example, though, I brought with you, example of this one, so this teacher you can see has kind of a high achieving class, an above, above-level class, and you can see all of the, a lot of students are up there in the high growth, so they've had amazing growth over the first half of the year. And even some of the low students here also had amazing growth. And we look at that, we would say the 50th percentile right there in the middle would be like a year's growth, or a half-year's growth. That's where we would want them. So some of those students are doing amazing, they've grown way above and beyond what's expected. So you'd have a conversation with that teacher about, hey, who are these students, why is your growth so amazing? You have a high, high class, so you know, what, what kind of things are you doing in the classroom to make this kind of happen? Here's another one, another high-achieving class where students are, really have a lot of great growth so far this year. So these are just some examples of some reports we look at. These two last classes were actually reports from classrooms over the last couple of months, and so just wanted to share that with the board. So you understand kind of what, when we take these assessments, a parent sees the reports come home, you know, what do we do with the data after that? Well, there's a lot of information, this is just one of the many reports we can pull out for teachers to look at of how their students are doing. And then again, the discussion should be around why that might be happening, you know, what, what kind of things you do in the classroom, what, what kind of things might you need to do for this student here, change some things up, do something different. So just wanted to highlight a few things, I know it's kind of hard to read, but I sent this out to the staff, so I just wanted to share with the board so you can all see where we want some congratulations so far halfway through the year. First, we had congratulations to every K through five math teacher and every specialist. It was the first time in four years that all grade levels had higher observed growth than expected growth. So every grade level, when you look at the average, they all did better than expected, all of those grade levels, which was awesome. So a big thank you to everyone, because we do have a new math program, and that's always difficult in the first year, so it seems to be paying off already. Also, congratulations to kindergarten, third grade, they had 70% and 69% of their students meet or exceed their projected math growth so far this year. So they were already meeting where they're projected to go, which is awesome. Also, congratulations to K through eight, the ELA teachers and every specialist. Combined, K through eight, so the entire district, they've had the best combined expected growth that we've seen in four years in language arts. So even though we're just beginning to create our new district literacy plan with the literacy committee we just formed, many of our teachers are already implementing changes because they're attending professional development and science of reading, and they're just doing a lot of work already, and so again, congratulations to all of them, because it's really paying off. Also, congratulations to third grade for having the highest conditional growth index in language arts by any single grade level in four years. The third grade students moved from the 62nd percentile in the fall to the 81st percentile in just five months. Now, this data percentile is, is all students take math across the nation, so this is their growth in just, again, half a year already, they've moved that far when compared to all of the districts and all the students in third grade throughout the country, so that's really awesome. country, so that's really awesome. And then finally, congratulations to AJH teachers and intervention specialists for having higher than observed expected growth in language arts at all three grade levels. So all three grade levels in AJH had better than expected growth for their students. So again, and so this hasn't happened since two thousand eighteen, nineteen, which was kind of the year before COVID. So a lot of great things happening this year, it's awesome having students back in school. Last couple of years have been kind of difficult and tumultuous, so having these kind of positive results already happen through this year is just, just awesome reports. So congratulations to all the teachers and all the staff, and we're doing a phenomenal job. It's not easy in this environment, we all know that, so kudos to all of them. Who's my report?
Sure as anyone has any questions.
Okay, I have my question, so back to the first data set, we showed with the growth versus achievement. So once all this is compiled and are we looking at these on the, like, are we addressing this on an individual basis or are groups of teachers coming together like, oh, well, we see that your classroom has a higher rate of growth than ours, like, are we, like, collaborating with how we can all?
Yeah, so, so the teachers have grade level teams, and most of the grade level teams are actually divided by, especially like in NOR, because they departmentalize, so they actually have like a math team and a reading team, whereas in Powers, where everyone teaches reading and math pretty much, they have a whole grade level team. So, yeah, I don't know if you want to share anything real quick, but that's where they discuss this, in grade level teams, and then, again, you're always sensitive because not everyone's reports are the same, so sometimes you look at kind of just grade level, what's happening overall over grade, but individually, the teachers on their own can look at this and work with the principal or discuss with their neighbor about their individual growth in the classroom.
We also talked about, for some of our teachers also collaborating with the coaches, I mean, we've got some fabulous language arts and math coaches in our district, so we talked about, like, we went over these plans with the literacy coaches, Brian and myself and Mike, the other day, and really were looking at, like, you know, what have we seen in the classroom that is explaining some of this awesome growth, and what are the things that we can, you know, we looked at some of the red dots, there are the dots in the red, but, okay, the student may have had really poor attendance at the beginning of the school year, so that could, you know, that's going to affect their academics. So having some of those conversations with staff members to figure out, you know, what, how, why the students have the growth they get.
So real quick, Dr. Messer, back to this one, remember these low-achieving students here who did phenomenal? Like, this is a classroom where there is an intervention specialist co-teaching with the teacher, right? So this is like, well, that's, I mean, that's exactly why this is such a great group for those students, because they're doing some great small group work in there. So it doesn't take much to figure out what's going right and going well, and that's, so you're exactly right, that's what we like to do.
We're hoping RTI addresses some of our concerns at our building as well with those different kind of groups, to serve us all the different types of students that we have and all the different pockets of things that we need.
And you know data, so it's, it's not, you don't always see the top achieving kids have so much growth, sometimes it's difficult. Miss Beaker, you know that, I've worked with top kids all the time, it's sometimes difficult to show.
It's the hardest group to get it.
Sometimes it's hard to show such great growth where they, you know, I mean, some of those students are up by the ninety, eighty, ninety, hundred percentile, so, so again, they're doing a good job.
Any other questions? No other questions? Now we will go to the best reporter. Mrs. Wackel.
Look at that. Well, my report today is, I want to showcase two items on the personnel recommendations today, or two items, two people. Sometime in your life, you come across people or people are put in your path, and you can't imagine, once they get there, how either your life or your organization ever got along before they were there, and these are two such people for me. I'm very excited, Chandler, stand up. Chandler will be recommended to be, right now this year, she is a long-term sub, school counselor over at NOR, and item B on the personnel recommendations is requesting that you approve her to become our full-time school counselor at NOR, starting with next school year. For some of you that may not be aware, Chandler stepped in at a tough time when Deb Raisler became ill and as a sub, and she just came into our path and has taken it on with grace and with poise, and, you know, running minute meetings with, with each student, taking and embracing rocks, our Girls Empowerment Group that she spoke about last month, and just a lot of amazing things that she has brought to the NOR team and to our, our school counselors group, and so I'm beyond pleased that she'll be joining us full-time next year. So, thank you, Chandler. Anything you want to say, not to put you on the spot, but?
I'm happy to be here, and I'm just happy that everything worked out, and, I don't know, I'm just happy to be here. So, thank you.
And the next one, Ms. Cory Rourke. Come on up, don't be shy, you're not.
I was sitting there, I was like, are you so quiet? Not to feel like, because it's the board meeting.
So, we all know and we all love Cory, Cory has been with us. Cory was actually the very first, one of the very first people I met when I, my first day on the job at Karen Amherst. She was running an extended school year program for her students at NOR, and so it was just a very warm welcome to come into the district, and that's just the person she is. To know Cory knows that she always puts others first, she is driven, she is knowledgeable, and she is one of the most caring people I know, and your integrity is unsurpassed. She has been working this past couple of years as our assistant principal and our preschool coordinator, has done amazing things to build our, our preschool program, and I know you are going to do fabulous things as our new special education and preschool coordinator. I'm going to make that stick, I promise. She's starting to be the new coordinator. So, thank you, Cory.
I appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to continuing to work with our preschool students, but then also serving our students with disabilities and their families on a greater level, so I appreciate it, thank you.
And that includes my best report.
Could I just add one thing?
Absolutely.
If that's okay. Sarah, could you speak to the number of internal candidates? As I recall, three?
We had three internal candidates.
Of our top five candidates were actually internal candidates.
Yes.
Which really speaks to the quality of people that we have here in Amherst, so I don't know if you wanted to speak to that.
Absolutely, we had nineteen folks apply for the position, and of those, you know, course-reviewed, did a paper screening of all of them, we brought in eight external candidates to do a round one, and after meeting with those round one candidates, it was really, there were really only two that we were, like, looking at our internal candidates and looking at the external candidates, and it was just, round two, we interviewed two external candidates and our three internal candidates, and the top three candidates were our three internals, you know, and it just, they were just very strong, very, very, very good people.
Good, good. Any other questions? All right. Next item is the JVS report. JVS is moving right along. It's competition time, I think if some of you've gotten some emails or seen some things from that, that several of your students are competing very well as they go into the springtime from that perspective. Nothing out of the ordinary, it's been a good school year for the JVS, we continue to move forward with that. Again, there's a lot of talk about, and I'm sure some of you read the article that was in some of the papers about Dr. Fairfocke and talking about the condition of the building and some of those things, we've probably seen that, so that continues to be on the board's priority. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them. Otherwise, I do believe that Dr. Fairfocke will be coming to make a presentation to this board sometime in the spring. I know that the board there has requested that he visit all thirteen school districts and do a presentation this year because we know that you are all going to travel there to attend a board meeting to hear a presentation. So we're putting him on the road this year. He's confident that he'll get in probably at least ten of the schools, there are some that are not fans of the JVS, they don't appreciate what the JVS does, whereas I think that Amherst High School certainly appreciates because they transport all of their sophomores out there to open house, they don't pick and choose.
Six buses this year.
All, the whole class gets to go, and we are one of the only ones that do that. Otherwise, it's kind of a random, because I know that the superintendent and principal here both support that if that's where a child should be or wants to be, you can certainly see with the engineering program, and Amherst has produced some great people who've gone on to engineering school out of that program. It's not the stigma that some people associate with it just because of its name. We have tried to change the name multitudes of times, however, there's some board members that just wanted to stay the JVS as opposed to Career Center or some of the more modern names that you see on a lot of those technical schools. So, we'll see, we've had that discussion again this year already, but every time we've attempted that, we don't get anywhere, okay? It's not that we haven't done that. So we, we appreciate all of the support that Amherst schools give the JVS and are glad that you participate in all that you do. You know, we've done more projects with the JVS from building dugouts to building concession stands to doing a lot of things and using that student labor to help them learn, so we appreciate that. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them. Mike, you have any?
That was the best report.
This board meeting always is before the JVS board meeting, so Thursday, Friday, I could have given you a more updated one than from last month, so let's move on. I don't believe that there's any other community reports, I know the foundation met, Steve, were you at that meeting?
Yes.
Is there anything that we should know about there?
No, just we're in the midst of students applying for the various scholarships, and I know the foundation scheduled the next meeting, I want to say sometime in April, early April, I think, to go through. Make those selections, and before you know it, it'll be the senior banquet over at German's Villa, and we'll be giving out all those scholarships, and it's such a wonderful evening that is, but, no, that's, that's the primary focus at this point, is identifying those scholarship winners.
Great. Then we would move on to personnel recommendations, please. Item eleven on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Engel, and I know you've mentioned previously that the board has had an opportunity, I know, to review the agenda and look at the various personnel items. I did want to highlight item B, as Sarah mentioned, which is a recommendation to employ Chandler as our full-time guidance counselor at NOR, and then also item, what is it here? Item L?
She had a volleyball at six-thirty, she waited so long.
To recommend Cory as our new court neighbor of special education, so I did want to highlight those two items, and with that, would like to recommend approval of items eleven A through eleven L.
Take a motion? A motion in a second?
Second.
Second. Comments or discussions for any, Mr. Sanders or anyone about any of these recommendations? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Item twelve would be the educational recommendations for this evening.
Yes, just three items here, and two of the three are recommendations for services for students with special needs, and then the other item is a recommendation regarding an MOU with Kiawoka Community College, and similar to what we did, I think it was last month, with Kent State University, we currently, again, do not have any students that are taking college credit plus through Kiawoka Community, but again, we want to have it in place in case there's a course that a student wants to take, so that's the reason behind that recommendation. So with that, would like to recommend approval of items twelve A through twelve C.
Motion, please? We have a motion, one in one second?
Second.
Okay. You're good?
I'm good.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Item thirteen, any business recommendations, please?
Actually, we do not have any.
There's nothing there, we want to make sure that there wasn't one lingering somewhere.
Yes, we actually looked at it, just in case something, you know, came up at the last minute, but nothing did.
Is there anything else that needs to come before the board this evening? If not, I entertain a motion for adjournment. A motion in a second, is there discussion or comments on that? No, no, sir, she's, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.